You know, bringing this together because we are in a very divided state in our country and in our world. And this is one of the many things we're going to need to do to think about how to protect and represent well the people that we represent here in the city of Minneapolis. So additional resources in the Civil Rights Department is one of the many steps we're going to need to be taking now and over the course of the next four years.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just, I actually just wanted to take an opportunity maybe to tell a short story that I think highlights the need for us in the city to figure out how we do a better job in encouraging people to complain and making sure they know what are the proper venues to complain, whether it is about acts of discrimination or instances of hate speech and crimes. Because our ability to track those is important to our ability to respond appropriately and to gather our resources. Not too long ago, there was an incident that I learned about through social media, through Facebook, where there was a swastika that was spray painted on a garage in North Minneapolis. And I apologize, I'm not sure if it was in the 5th ward or the 4th ward. And I believe it was a vacant property. And two women, who I would call very well-informed and connected social justice workers, got together and they worked to clean off that emblem of hate. And there have been some concerning things that are happening after that. But I will say, I had reached out and asked if they had filed a complaint with the city, either by contacting 301 or another place, about this incident that really was a fairly high-profile incident. And neither one of them had thought to do that. And it may be in the moment, I will say, this is also, it's a crime of vandalism. We track any instance of graffiti that we are able to do so. But I just say that because these were very well-informed, connected-to-city-processes people. And if they did not understand that the city felt their complaint to us was valuable and important and helped us be able to do our jobs better, then many, many other people do not understand that as well. And we have work to do to reach out.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Glidden's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Councilmember Glidden, did you have any more amendments? On to Councilmember Conno.
One second. Madam President, I'm waiting for my amendment to be printed, so if that's okay, I'll just...
All right, move on. Councilmember Gordon, then. We'll come back to you, Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I hope I have enough copies going that way. I have an amendment that I'm passing out. I also emailed it out to councilmembers, so you should have it in your inbox. This is a staff direction that was inspired by the letter we got from Councilmember, former Councilmember Ostrow and former Governor Arne Carlson, talking about the Viking Stadium. It would direct finance staff to, one, monitor and report on an annual basis on the cost for the Viking Stadium, its operation and management, and the adjacent parking ramps and park; and, two, limit the ongoing city subsidy for operations and capital maintenance to the amounts provided for in statute; and, three, for the staff direction of September 11, 2015, report back to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee on the desirability and feasibility of reopening the park use agreement between the city and MSFA. And then, next paragraph, directing IGR staff to bring to the IGR committee an item related to city support for legislation creating an enforcement mechanism that will ensure that city and state stadium spending caps are honored. If there's a second, I'll speak to this.
Councilmember Gordon has moved a staff direction on the Viking Stadium and park, associated parking ramps, asking for an annual report, monitor, limiting the city subsidy for operations and capital maintenance to the amounts provided for in statute, and a report back to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee on the desirability and feasibility of reopening the park use agreement between the city and MSFA, and directing IGR staff to bring back to the IGR committee an item related to city support for legislation creating an enforcement mechanism that will ensure that city and state stadium spending caps are honored. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I'll just briefly to this. I had the opportunity to share this with our Finance Director. He indicated that they're actually working on these items anyway, and that they would be able to come back and report on an annual basis on the costs, and also on the staff direction. And also did have a chance to talk to IGR Committee Chair, who saw no problem bringing this to the IGR Committee sometime next year.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Councilmember Gordon for bringing this forward and would like to be listed as a co-author.
Okay. Clerk will note that. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Point of clarification for Councilmember Gordon. So item number one relates to monitoring reporting on an annual basis for specifically the Viking Stadium, which totally makes sense, and I agree with. Item number three references the staff direction, which I believe was actually my staff direction on September 11, 2015. So I'm thankful for you calling this to our attention. Item number two, it says, "Limit the ongoing city subsidy for operations and capital maintenance to the amounts provided for in the statute." Is the reference here to the stadium, or is the reference here to the commons?
Councilmember Gordon?
Well, I don't think the statute necessarily limits what we pay to the commons, but I'm happy to accept a clarification. It sounds like you're wanting to be specifically to the Viking Stadium.
That's correct.
I'd consider that a friendly amendment. City subsidy for the Viking Stadium, or we could say, city subsidy for operations and capital maintenance of the Viking Stadium to the amounts provided for. Oh.
Is that satisfactory, Councilmember Frye?
Madam President, that's wonderful.
Okay. Clerk, did you note that?
Got it, yep.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I will ask to be added as an author on this as well. And I'll just note, although this isn't a subject on this direction, a related item that I know finance staff is also working on is a regular public reporting relating to all sales tax receipts, so that we have a better, just understanding of what those are and their trajectory, and then we're better able to understand the permitted and policy-directed uses of those funds within that context. So I just wanted, because I do think it's an important additional item, even though it wasn't listed, that our finance staff is already working on to resent those public reports.
Okay. Any further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries.
I'm ready, ma'am.
Back to Councilmember Conno. Oh, Councilmember Quincy? Councilmember Quincy has a priority motion. Councilmember Quincy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And this is on behalf of Councilmember Conno, so she can make her motion. I'd like to move to remove from table the item that we have previously done in that cycle.
Oh, okay. So back on the table is Councilmember Conno's motion regarding changes in the budget for strategies to combat sex trafficking. Sure we all understand where we're going here?
So, Madam President, are we voting then to remove from table?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
We need to take that.
A motion, a motion's been made to move Councilmember Conno's motion back in front of us. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Councilmember Conno, then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the motion that has been distributed reads amending the 2017 mayor's recommended budget for the Office of the City Assessor, the City Coordinator's Office, and the Health Departments on a one-time basis by decreasing the Office of the City Assessor by $25,000 and decreasing the City Coordinator's Office by $25,000, and increasing the Health Department by $50,000 to be allocated for culturally relevant community-based intervention and street outreach strategies to help the transgender American Indian and young women and girl victims of sex trafficking and commercial sexual exploitation. So that paragraph stays the same. Second paragraph, directing the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department to transfer their 2016 end-of-year salary savings on a one-time basis, not to exceed $25,000, to the Health Department to augment the culturally relevant community-based intervention and street outreach strategies to help transgender American Indian and young women and girl victims of sex trafficking and commercial sexual exploitation. And the third line, the third line here says, directing the Finance and Property Services Department to provide options by June 30 of 2017 to the mayor for the 2018 budget for a minimum of $50,000 for ongoing funding of this effort. So to clarify, the first paragraph stays the same, except for the one-time replaces the ongoing, and then the second paragraph stays the same, and then the last is an addition that will instruct our Finance and Property Services Department to work with the mayor's office to find ongoing funding for this effort.
Councilmember, on Councilmember Conno's motion, Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Very supportive of this motion. I just want to make sure that I understand it fully. So for amending the 2017 mayor's recommended budget, when you're getting, when you're taking it out of the City Coordinator's Office and the Health Departments, that's just on a one-time basis? But is there another portion, Councilmember Conno, that is on an ongoing basis?
Councilmember Conno?
What was your question?
I'm just trying to figure out what's on an ongoing basis. My desire is to have this piece funded on an ongoing basis, and so I'm just making sure that that's still the case.
Currently, there is no ongoing source. Everything is one time. The commitment here is that next year, the staff will be working with the mayor's office to identify ongoing funding moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Conno. So first, thank you for your work. I'm very supportive of it. You know, I also want to call attention to the fact that this was an excellent way to work it out, to compromise, to negotiate, and then to come to a solution. And I applaud all three councilmembers in that backroom deal. And backroom deals, they get a bad rap a lot of times, but this is actually an instance where people are working together collectively. They are able to figure things out. And this is a backroom deal that I'm fully in support of. So thank you very much for all three of you.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Conno's motion? Councilmember Glidden?
I just actually just want to say, you know, I know this was in jest, but I think we need to be really careful in this environment that we're in right now, because what backroom deal implies is that more people than were supposed to were talking about something outside of the public process. And I know that wasn't what you were suggesting. You were talking more about collegiality and being able to work with one another. But I just, I just wanted to say that. And I, and I just say it because I think there are a lot of things kind of happening in this environment that we're in right now, that I just think we want to be careful about our language.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, the previous comment was in jest, but the serious segment of it, and I will not be joking this time, was that, you know, we are in an era right now where people value purity. They value someone who's willing to stand up for their beliefs, to not negotiate, to not compromise. And in the end, what you see at the state and federal legislatures is that nothing gets done. And when you're willing to compromise, and some of that compromise happens in a room, some of that compromises happens in a public chamber, but it's an important step to actually get things done. And the result in this case is we're helping victims of sexual exploitation. And I think it's a wonderful result.
On Councilmember Conno's motion, any further discussion of her amendment, excuse me? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Any further amendments, Councilmember Conno?
Not me, no.
Okay. Councilmember Palmasano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being passed out in front of you is simply a staff direction. Is this the appropriate time to do a staff direction that doesn't have a dollar figure specifically allocated to it?
Sure.
Thank you. As I've had some conversations with some of you, this staff direction directs the City Coordinator's Office, as the leader of Minneapolis's Youth Cabinet, to work with our partners on the YCV, the mayor's office, and in conjunction with the City of St. Paul, to explore feasibility of a sustainable, scalable, universal pre-kindergarten program across our two cities that could eventually be implemented statewide. This takes the interest of universal pre-K from a state level, and it begins to work on the feasibility of it locally. It acknowledges that sometimes the best way our city can be involved is to engage all of our relationships. What this staff direction is doing is acknowledging that there are small amounts of money that our Coordinator's Office can put toward a study. It also acknowledges that this is contingent upon the City of St. Paul doing the same thing through their budget adoption process in the next couple of weeks. And I've worked on this staff direction with Councilmember Rebecca Naker in St. Paul. We'd like to help to have a unique collaborative effort with Minneapolis and St. Paul, expand on existing research that's been done at the state level, and programs we currently have in place in Minneapolis and St. Paul, and see what, what might something like this look like? How could we create a pilot program, and how could we assist their one-day being universal pre-K services in our state? So with that, I offer this as a staff direction. The date of September 19 is somewhat arbitrary. It's just trying to help there be something to come back to both cities for consideration in their following budget cycle. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved a staff direction regarding early, what do we call it, universal pre-K. Any discussion? Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to be brief. Obviously, I'm very supportive of this, and I appreciate Councilmember Palmasano bringing it forward. I wanted to clarify a few things of why it's coming to the Committee of the Whole and as part of the youth cabinet's operations, because it very closely aligns what Mayor Hodges has been leading with the, her cradle-to-K cabinet. And I spoke to Ms. Watts from the mayor's office. This council's not going to make staff directions to the mayor's office, but it seems to be the most appropriate place, where there'd be a real good interaction, which is already in place with the mayor's office and the cradle-to-K cabinet, as well as the Youth Coordinating Board, who are members of our youth cabinet. So this is something more inclusive, that does not step on the toes, it's more collaborative in nature, and it adds the element of the youth cabinet to put it on its work plan so we can track it, and that's led by the city coordinator. I also spoke with Gretchen Muzikant, who is the chair, one of the co-chairs of the youth cabinet, and I myself actually participate on a monthly basis with that. So we'll be watching it very closely and looking forward to a relationship with St. Paul that will help further our agenda for both of our cities for our pre-K students.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Palmasano's motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Any further motions? Anyone? Seeing none, I have a couple. So I'm going to move first a staff direction, and Ms. Hanson can pass out the staff direction, which is regarding the allocation in the mayor's budget for collaborative strategies for policing. I will have to say, Mayor, I give you a compliment, because I think that strategy was a hit. Everybody's interested in it, so you can tell from our discussion. So my motion actually is to move the staff direction, that staff and, and Mayor, the mayor and I have been communicating back and forth to try and understand what she was trying to get at in exactly with this strategy. So this moves on our conversation, which really goes to, we're very excited about the allocation that's in the mayor's budget for West Broadway, but we want to see it move really fast, because we have huge challenges on West Broadway, and we would like to see some of these strategies that are developed through the community process be in place by next summer. So this, this motion says that staff and finance and property services are directed to ensure that at least $250,000 of the $500,000 allocated for collaborative safety strategies be directed towards work along West Broadway Avenue in North Minneapolis. These funds should be distributed to groups or organizations which have shown a long history of collaborative work along West Broadway, and who bring together business and community members who employ staff focused solely on the improvement and safety of West Broadway. Organizations which do not focus on West Broadway shall not be considered for this funding. Finance and property service staff shall present the process for the dispersment of these funds to the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee by March 15, 2017, and these funds shall be distributed by June 16, 2017. So we are asking that we're first in line to work on the collaborative process, to get strategies in front of us and dollars out the door. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. And I, and I did become aware of this motion, and talked to the technical assistance provider at, providers at Cities United. And certainly, he, Anthony Smith, who runs Cities United, Cities United was, said, yes, that timeline is probably a good idea, it helps move things along, and he was in favor of that. The limitations on who can participate, you know, he just asked questions about, because limiting participation at this stage of the game, before the actual program has been put together in any other way, sends a signal to the community that this may not be for a full community process for, for the folks involved. And so that question was raised. But the timeline and the deadline, he has folks in place and, and is, you know, ready to go and ready to help the community walk through a process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would just respond just very briefly. Having been involved in so many community processes in North Minneapolis over the years that I've, that I've been, lived in that community, I just, I really think this is an important way to, to express. I've been where people dangle money out there, and you get everybody thinking, you know, it's like their day to get rich or something. And I just really think this is, I think this is an outstanding way to do the work, but I want to, I want to make sure that it, that it gets done in a quick and timely basis and gets strategies in front of us that I don't think any of us would disagree about in the end. You know, we know what the challenges are, and we just want to have a swift and clear process that gets us to a place where we can have some of this stuff implemented by this summer. I don't think it needs to be exclusionary. Any discussion then on the motion? Any further discussion on the staff direction? Excuse me? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. And my last motion that I have, and Ms. Hanson has copies of that, is about, I'm so tired. It's late. Thank you. It's about, oh, it's a motion, it's a motion to, actually to fund a program that we involved, that we became involved with last year, and so it's an additional year of funding for Summit Academy's contextualized GED program. We had a report in Community Development Regulatory Services about how many people were able to obtain their GED through this program that we funded for the first time last year. It's very impressive. And so this motion would amend the mayor's budget for the Health and Community Development and Economic Development Departments on a one-time basis, again, by decreasing the Health Department by $100,000 for the male sexual health outreach program, and increasing the Community Development and Economic Development Departments by $100,000 to be allocated for Summit Academy's contextualized GED program. So I will move that, look for a second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Councilmember Gordon?
Well, looking at how many amendments that have come forward and the great consensus that there's been, I kind of regret that I'm not going to be able to support this. And it's not because I don't support the funding for Summit Academy or the other, whatever we get to provide, the GED program, which I think is a fabulous program. And I did already have the opportunity to discuss funding alternatives a little bit, but I didn't come up with an alternative source either. But I really appreciated seeing the $100,000 in the mayor's budget to expand targeted sexual health services for male adolescents and young adults. I think that it's a serious problem in the city of Minneapolis. And they, we even, we learned from the Health Department that the rate of chlamydia infections among 15- to 19-year-olds in Minneapolis is more than double the rate of chlamydia in Minnesota as a whole, and the rate of gonorrhea infection among 15- to 19-year-olds in Minneapolis is more than four times higher than Minnesota overall. Youth of color ages 15 to 19-years-old disproportionately represent the majority of chlamydia and gonorrhea cases. We heard at our committee, a great report, outreach that was done to youth throughout the city, trying to figure out, what do you need, how can we help you because of this problem? And they came and gave, I think, a pretty moving report to committee members about how we need to help support this and fund it. We looked back, and we saw that in the years back when we were actually funding some of these education and street outreach programs, that the cases of gonorrhea and chlamydia actually declined in the city of Minneapolis more rapidly. That was back between 2004 and 2009, when we actually had some funding. We were working through the teenage medical services at the time and doing street outreach to do that, and really had a big impression. I think the effects of these diseases can be life-changing and fairly significant, and I just don't want to see us lose the funding there. I think there must be another source for that. I'm not going to be able to support this motion, and I don't have an amendment handy, but I welcome my colleagues to identify another funding source.
Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. I will be supporting this, and if it's okay with the author, if I may be added as an author to this, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll also be supporting this motion. I certainly support men's sexual health outreach, but in this case, I, I do support the money for additional jobs and job training more.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think it's too bad to have to choose between these two worthy programs, because so many of us were able to find sources. And I wish I also had an alternative to suggest at this late minute in the hour, but I don't. And I just wanted to reflect, you know, the, the presentation that we had, that, you know, I guess only six of us were able to see at the Health Committee, was very powerful. It was actually one of the most powerful things I've seen in my time on the council. It was young men of color speaking about their work as leaders in their community, working, you know, with mentors. And it was specific to a health problem in our community, which is very large disparities in who is impacted by sexually transmitted diseases. But it was also went far beyond that, in having these young men take control of their own health, to become empowered as leading voices in their school communities and their neighborhood communities. And I think that the impacts of the program, again, went far beyond the very worthy in and of itself, health benefits of the program. So I, you know, I'm in the position of not being able to support the motion, because, again, I just think that the overall impact of the health program was so significant. And again, had I been able to work to try to find other funding, I would have offered an alternative.
Any further discussion on the motion, on the amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed? That carries. Back to the 2017 operating budget, Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have comments on the whole package, if everyone's done with motions, so just put that out there. Start an open house.
Okay, why don't you go ahead then?
All right, thank you. I just wanted, without this moment passing, to thank my colleagues for their support around our pretty comprehensive... around our pretty comprehensive package for small businesses. I know we had a press conference today, and I also mentioned on Friday, I have a few comments today to share. I do think about a lot of the incredible people that I've come to know who have started their own small businesses, including my friend Tina Rexing. I used to work with her at Target Corporate. She'd always bring in these cookies, these caramels, and just share them with the coworkers. And I think all of us, or at least enough people, made a critical mass of turning to her and saying, you should, this is really, really good. You should start a business. You should start a business. I remember having those conversations with her, those one-on-one conversations, and she struggled and really wrestled with that choice and what it meant for her family, the risk involved with setting out and losing what is a dual income and going down just to her husband's income. And at the end of the day, she made that decision and made that leap, and I'm proud to say now she has a store on University Avenue. New York Post named her Best Cookie in the Nation, and she employs 15 people. And there are countless stories like this. I think of Omar Ansari, 11 years ago, sweating over his apartment stove that couldn't heat his homebrew batch of beer up quick enough to make it all work. And now, 11 years later, he employs over 150 people in a $33 million brewery that was also named Best in the Nation, happened to also be named Best Restaurant in the Nation Brewer's Table. And I think about all of these, even, even our largest employer in the city, Target Corporate, some of the best, most highest-paying jobs we have, employing more than 10,000 people, started 114 years ago as a little grocery store, little goods store. So what 114 years from now will we leave behind? What legacies will be left behind by the passions of people today who take that leap of faith and work hard and save and save and save and plan to do something great for our city and invest even more in it and create among it these unique spaces and places we enjoy? And I mentioned this earlier, Minneapolis is number one in a lot of things. We have the best park system in the nation, best bike trails in the nation. We also are first in the nation most dermatologist per capita.
But you can't get an appointment with one.
Yeah. So, you know, and I just, I hope we keep working to be the number one in the nation, most, best city for our small businesses and our entrepreneurs, because they're just some incredible individuals out there, and they really truly exemplify courage and tenacity and passion and dedication to do what they do. And so I'm just so thankful for all of their work, for the work of staff, especially Nurya Rivera Vandermeide, for our various partners and allies, Main Street Alliance, JCA, Metro IBA, and for all my colleagues for supporting this work. Thank you.
Counselmember Worsani.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, I'll be brief as my colleagues are all falling asleep, but I just wanted to mention that, and I'm very supportive of what Council, Councilmember Andrew Johnson said with regards to the, to the small business, and I would like to remind us that we started the Small Business Office with, with the staff direction that we, that I made with regards to the sick and safe time ordinance, understanding the importance of having compliance support for small businesses. And we also like to mention, I would also like to mention that some of the biggest drivers of our local economy have been immigrant and women-owned small businesses, and they have not had the support that they deserve from the city of Minneapolis. So I think we're in the right direction with the small business, setting up the Small Business Office, and I would also like to thank the mayor for, and the director of CPED for their support with regards to this issue. So again, I think it's a step in the right direction.
Any further discussion? Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to go ahead in queue of any council members if they wish to speak, but I would like to speak to the budget overall and what I've heard tonight.
But we still have to adopt the rates and everything, so let's, why don't we wait till the end for that? All right? All right. Seeing no further discussion then on the 2017 operating budget, Clerk will call the roll.
Counselmember Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes in one nay.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the five-year capital program, and that motion before us is a passage of a resolution adopting the 2017 through 21 capital program. Any discussion on that?
I'll make that motion, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselmember Quincy. Yes, motion from Ways and Means, capital program. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Counselmember Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item is adopted. And next, we have the utility rates as recommended by the Ways and Means Committee, passage of a resolution designating rates for water, sewers, solid waste, and recycling services effective January 1, 2017. Any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Counselmember Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those rates are adopted. So now, I think if people want to comment about the process, council members first and then the mayor. So I would just, as soon as nobody's jumped in, I want to thank our finance staff for their wonderful, great work, as always, just such professionalism in accommodating all of us. I just am always amazed. So I want to thank you for all the great work, and I want to thank my colleague, Counselmember Quincy, Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, for having a wonderful, open process to discuss the mayor's budget recommendations, good information through the hearings, and a respectful process. So thank you, Counselmember Quincy. And then I thank my colleagues for all their participation in the budget process and paying such close attention to this great, big budget and all the people that it serves in our city. Counselmember Liddon.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Well, you kind of stole what I was going to say, so I'll just be brief in repeating that I think this was a very collegial process, and I want to thank Counselmember Quincy for helping steering us through the process. I think we are arriving at a place where we're going to go home and, and maybe not cry so much on the way out, because we arrived in a, in a fairly good way. I also want to congratulate Mark Ruff on his first time through the Minneapolis budget process. I think it went all right, and you've got a really wonderful staff, and I really want to thank all the folks on the finance team, and thank also the clerks who have staffed us extremely well and are here late at night with us as they always are, because they have to be, but we know that they love it. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for letting me speak. As so many times, I've thought about the budget since August, since I presented it to you all in August. Often, I thought of it in terms of balance, you know, balancing different needs in the city, balancing different perspectives on how we approach public safety, all of that. But, and I, I think I initially thought even tonight, when I came in, that the comments I would make at the end hopefully could be about balance. But now I understand that we have actually changed the center of gravity on how we think about public safety in the city of Minneapolis. The conversation tonight, yes, it's about balancing, knowing that we need to balance the needs of law enforcement and the needs of community, but, but this is actually understanding that those two things are now intertwined with one another. And, Madam President, you pointed out, there was a lot of discussion tonight about investment in public collaborative community strategies for public safety. And that was notable to me as well, that the conversation tonight was about public safety and how we provide it, and that most of that conversation about public safety was about the partnerships we build in community and the impact that has on our public safety and the increased investments that, that you all chose to make tonight in that way of approaching public safety, in addition to 15 additional police officers, in addition to the other investments that were in this budget. It's not just law enforcement in the 21st century, it's public safety, and we all have a role to play in that. Community members, law enforcement, elected leaders, all of us have a role. And so it signals a change in how we are doing that and how they relate to one another. You know, and we are going to need to be able to come together and work with community to think about how to keep our community safe for the next four years. I think the, the increased investment in civil rights is another example of how we're going to need to come together in the next four years to work together. And there's a lot of great things in this budget, a lot of great things that balance making sure we're running the city well, making sure we're managing our growth well, traffic control agents, firefighters, a get-to-yes city. That's yes about helping small business owners navigate their way through the city, but also making sure that our city is a place that understands people shouldn't have to work so hard to navigate, that we are customer service focused, and that our regulators say no, but they, that we can also invite them to say, but here's how we can get to yes, so you can invest in the city of Minneapolis. There's a lot of investment in our staff in this budget, for training for them, for helping enhance their work and so that they can do it better, and I, and I think that's one of the calls that we've had and that we've shared together. So there's a lot in here, and a lot of it is about balance, but there is a center of gravity that has shifted when we think about public safety and how we do that together as a community. And I think that is one of the most significant things that I will take away from this whole budget process and the whole conversation we've been having for the last year about how we provide public safety. So thank you. Thank you to the council, thank you to the staff, thank you for your consideration and your work. Thank you so much to the staff for your work, and I look forward to moving ahead together with this budget in, in place.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order. Moved in second. All in approval, say aye. Aye opposed? We are adjourned, and are we going to re-adjourn to the next, to Friday? Friday. Friday is our last council meeting of the year.